All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the special city council meeting to order for August 26. Roll call.
Ben Keel.
Tom Marsler.
Kirby Moynihan.
Lloyd Johnson.
Lloyd Johnson.
When you answer?
James Monje.
Shannon Sweet.
Joe Bilder.
Michael Lobis.
Lloyd Johnson.
Michelle Lapp. Public hearing. We're considering the amendments to the EDA.
Sure. Thank you. Mayor members of the council, in fact, it was amended and restated, I'll call it, resolution establishing the economic development authority for the city of Montrose. We used the same format that you used when you originally created the EDA some years ago. We just updated that format. The most significant modification that we made, I think, in content was that we changed the membership for the EDA, as we've discussed in the past, from simply being the five city council members to being a five-member EDA that would consist of two city council members. The reason for that is we wanted to get some additional citizen input and focus on economic development. We thought we could do that by bringing in some additional residents. And so, we provided for that in an enabling resolution. Other than that, we mostly just updated language. Your original language granted all the powers. I did put a limitation in there that if your EDA is borrowing money, they have to go to the city council for approval. That's pretty typical. It wasn't in your old document, but it is in the new document, so, just so you understand. You know, most of the organizational stuff is very similar. We had to do something a little bit different on terms and appointment. Said each commissioner that are not city council members shall be appointed to a two-year term, for instance. You could certainly do something different than that, but that seems to be... We seem to like to have at least a couple of years, because there's one year to kind of get up to speed and a second year to be really effective as a commissioner. And then, you know, certainly some folks will stay on line for multiple terms, but ultimately, we like at least a minimum of a two-year term. Some language regarding removal for cause. The number and duties of the officers that you have haven't really changed. You know, again, I fall back on our most significant change is the membership component, going from five city council members to two council members plus three residents. And so, I'm happy to answer any questions with regard to the amended and restated resolution. You know, ultimately, you're gonna be asked to adopt something, you know, whether it's in that form or as amended by you guys, but I think it's pretty consistent with what we've talked about for a couple of months now. So, more than happy to answer questions from council or public.
I have a question. Compensation and reimbursement.
Yep.
Is that what the council... I'm just wondering with the council, are we gonna continue to do the same as what, like Park and Rec? The same dollar amount?
That's what I suggested, $25 a meeting for the non-council members.
Yep. Okay.
And that would be done by your separate resolution that you do establishing compensation for all of your boards and committees, so... You've done it by separate resolution in the past as well.
I think you've done a very good job of summarizing everything we've discussed for many of these.
As you recall, that initial work plan is, you know, item number one was doing this, the action that's been free this evening, and updating the governing resolution. Our initial work plan, you know, is mostly about educating ourselves on program availability, inviting in guests from the state and other programs that work specifically in economic development to learn how those folks can bring their resources to bear in this community, to help create jobs and economic opportunity, and, you know, to essentially establish a business retention program. And so, between those two things, I think commissioners will be busy for a little while and, you know, have something to do that really focuses that energy on economic development hopefully, so...
See, I had a question too. Is the Robert's Rule, is that a kind of a law? Do they have it that way, or...
It's not a law, or it's not a requirement, but ultimately, most boards adopt Robert's Rules of Order for, you know, how they operate. So, it's pretty... It's very common to do that.
Robert's Rules of Order is one of several different codes of rules of order for public bodies, and that can be one set of rules that they adopt. It doesn't necessarily have to be that one, but they certainly have that one.
All of our other boards have adopted that one. All of our other boards, council uses Robert's Rules of Order, and our Park and Rec, our filings, all use Robert's Rule of Order.
I think you guys need to go too.
Try to, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. And I just know it's a very widely recognized format.
Right. Yeah. You should open it.
Okay, so we need someone to make a motion to open the public hearing, so that you can take public comment.
I'll make a motion, open the public hearing. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any votes? Okay. Anything from the public?
Well, I just have one comment. It really isn't an epiphany. This is something that's been presented to the council, by many people, and to several councils over the years. It's a good thing.
Do you think, do you think three from the business community is enough?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Because I'm familiar with what they do in Hanover, and they've got quite an active and a larger EDA, but they also have a business or industrial park.
I, I've worked with development corporations that are local organizations created specifically for economic development, to own property, buildings, that sorts of things. Most typically, I have a much broader membership.
Right.
I think when you're starting an EDA like this, and, well, not starting, but refocusing an EDA, starting with five is a great start. You know, it's dictated by statute on the number of members. I think you can have seven or nine. Starting at five makes for a nice, easy body where folks can understand who's responsible for what, and if you decide at some point that there's enough interest and passion for it, you can certainly, you know, modify this resolution, again, increase membership. I, I think, starting with, finding three people that are really interested in the topic is a good start.
Have we reached out to any other three businesses? Just see if there is any?
We were reading...
The others came through?
Yeah, we really have the document that we could go out and talk to people.
Okay.
And then they will come back from the council for appointments, so...
Okay. Any other comments?
I wish to close the public...
Make a motion to close the public hearing. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay.
So...
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2019-20. I'll second.
Okay. Kirby.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Ben.
Aye.
How about I and Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
All right. Michael, you're up.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon. On behalf of the Census Bureau, Director Marilyn A. Sanders in Chicago, and myself, Michael Lobis, based in St. Paul, I would like to thank the invitation by Mayor Otto and Deb to talk with you briefly for 10 minutes about the upcoming census and something very important that we call the Complete Count Committee. And having heard about your resolution about the Economic Development Commission, which I think is wonderful, the census information feeds into many of the decisions that businesses make in terms of where they're going to invest, because it's all available. And also, there is a concern about what it is that I'm going to suggest, which is establishing a complete count committee, which requires volunteers from the community to try to encourage people to respond to the census. Because the census comes every 10 years, people tend to forget about it, or are not necessarily aware of it, or may think that because they've gotten something else in the mail, which is the American Community Survey, which comes out all the time, and we call it the long ser... the long form, may say, "Well, you know, we've done the census, we really don't have to do it." But the census is really very important. It's written into law, into our constitution. It's part of what we need to do in order to know who we are. It counts really everybody, everywhere, so if we're thinking about, for example, Alaska, a little tidbit of information, when someone goes out, I, for example, use my car and I get gas reimbursement for using my car. In Alaska, you get gas reimbursement for using your personal airplane to go to the community. So, we really are everywhere, and we really need to count everybody, citizens, non-citizens, all ages, all groups, and that's part of the idea of a demographic picture. This demographic picture comes out every 10 years, and the form that we're talking about is the short form that has 10 questions and asks basic information such as, "Have you lived here for..." and "How many people live here?", and a variety of other basic questions. And one of the reasons that I'm here is because, as we will, and I will emphasize this just in terms of the handout that you have, and I have, the complete handout is there, and I prefer to talk to it and not necessarily portray it, because we really want, should have a conversation, but the idea is that it's very important to respond, and part of the concern that the Census Bureau has is that every community should try to respond at the 90% level or above. And that's not always possible, for a variety of reasons that I may not be aware of, but you know your community best. And so, I'm going to refer you to page 15 and slide 30, if you're so kind, and for the audience, I have just one copy left, but I hope you can share that amongst each other. So, it's, it's there as well.
Oh, they each have one.
Oh, they each have one. Wonderful. So, it's on, it's on page 15 and it's slide 30, and it says, "Localized Mail Participation Rate Map." And this is for the city of Montrose, and chose a participation rate in 2000 and 2010. And this is based on the mail response rate. And in the 2020 census, we're going to do online, we're going to use the telephone, we're going to use a variety of mechanisms to encourage participation. But as you can see, the participation rate in 2000 was 76%, in 2010 was 73%. And, again, what the census is recommending is above 90%. If you would go... And this is exclusively based on the return of the mail response. So, projecting into the future, we have something called, and that would be slide 32, and it is on page 16, I believe. It's right there. And I know it's hard to read, but it says in the top corner, "Low Response Rate, 19%." And that's what we would project for the 2020 census, that about 90% of the people may not respond in Montrose. And the idea is to find ways in which people would respond. Why don't people respond? You know your community best. I appreciate being a guest here. Part of this is, we live in a very changing environment. People don't live in traditional households. We have issues in terms of counting children from one to five, because in many instances, they grow up with a cousin or a relative, and on census day, nobody counts them, because they don't realize it's either with mom, dad, or with the cousins. We also have hard-to-count communities in terms of, for example, veterans, hard-to-count communities in terms of people who are homebound. And so, all of this is something that the census has taken very seriously, and for the past few censuses, has come up with something called the Complete Count Committee. And the Complete Count Committee is basically a citizen-led initiative of volunteers who are called the trusted voices of the community. These are you, of course, but the idea would be to find others who would volunteer, who would form a committee of two to three people, considering the size of this city, and would receive training and materials, and then would engage with the community to share information about the census, such as, the census is private for 72 years, the information does not get released. It never gets released in personal form unless you ask for it, and you can only ask for yours, you can't ask for your wife's or your relatives. And so, for example, I'm sworn to silence for life. Can never speak about what we call personally identifiable information, such as social security members. And we don't ask for that anyway, but we do ask for information that some people feel they don't want to share. And it's very important for people to realize that the census does not share this with anybody. And this is by law, so it doesn't get shared with law enforcement, it doesn't get shared with the IRS, it doesn't get shared with anybody but in an aggregate form. So, for example, it would say, when the census data comes out, on December 31st, it goes, 2020 goes to the, to the president, it would say, "This is the population of Montrose, and there are a certain percentage of people who are between one to five, eight to 25", and so on. That's all the information. But for us, it's so important to convey that to people, and we really live in an environment where, I was in another community, I sat in a coffee shop, and someone asked me, "So, you work for the government?" And I said, "Yes, the Census Bureau." "Ah, the Census Bureau! Can't trust it." You know, share information. We don't share the information. So, to return to my message and close my presentation, the idea of a complete count committee is that the council decides that it is a possibility to find those two to three people who are trusted voices, who will come together as a result of whatever the council decides in terms of ordinance, resolution, decision, whatever official act you engage in to decide on that. And that letter, which is a very brief one, and we can't write it, but I did add a piece of information, which is actually a letter, page nine and page 10, is basically the information I'm telling you about. So, there's a lot of detail in there that you can look at. Uh, I'm sorry, this is in your, in your minutes.
Oh.
I apologize. I'm... I know, I'm pouring between his fingers. But I want to stay within my 10 minutes. I'm two minutes short. So, the idea is, again, these are people who volunteer, and then the responsibility of sharing the information is not really anymore the part of the mayor, or the council, or Deb, who's overworked and probably underpaid. I've come to enough city councils to realize that there's too much work and aren't enough resources. So, this is an idea to move it to the community. And then again, once that letter is in, and it's sent to Mrs. Sanders, and there's an email address, and I provide all that with a copy to me, then we can engage in training, we can engage, provide the information, and we can encourage activities which can be as simple as if you have a festival. So, the community of Dassel has Red Rooster Days, so I'm going to be at Red Rooster Days, and I'm going to be advertising the census. And I'm going to be going to be talking about the census and encouraging people to, to participate in a complete count committee. The other part is, we're hiring, and it's very important. We hire locally, we pay $15 or more, you work locally, and that's very important, because we can't really have a census unless we have people who are locally employed. So, with that, I'd like to close, and I'm actually personally overwhelmed by your generosity. For me, it is a real privilege to be able to be here. I've asked for permission to sit through the whole session, because for me, this is where democracy works. Personally, I, I can't believe the dedication you folks have. I can't believe how wonderful this is, and so, to allow me to be here is something that is worth more than, of course, I hope you do have a complete count committee and all that and this stuff, but is there time for any one or two questions?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yep.
Are there any questions?
Well, I'm sure glad you didn't lead with, "I'm from the government, not here to help."
Absolutely! Because, you know, we aren't really here to help you, we're here to find ways in which you can help yourself. So, this is one time where the government says, "Look, we've sent someone from the government, me out, but what we really want to do is encourage the community to help itself." And a note on this, because this has been done in 2000, 2010, in some communities, these committees continue to be in place, but they do other things, civic activities, they morph into something else, and, and people who sit on them vary. What is important is, I consider it a civic activity, and the other part is, it involves fairly little time, one or two hours a week in the beginning, maybe three or four hours, one festival weekend or some activity. And then, as we get closer to the census, there may be some more reminder activities. But again, I'm here all the time to provide support, encouragement, ideas. The only thing I can't do is speak on your behalf, because what I am is, I'm your facilitator. I'm here to provide that support. So, yes, I'm, I'm here from the government, but no, we're not asking you to do anything for us, it's for yourselves.
Well, one of the things we hear all the time is about data security.
Yes, sir.
If they can hack the Pentagon, you know, they can certainly hack, you know, your database, and that's, I think, I don't know how to answer that question with people.
And I do have an answer for that, and it's part of the presentation. I work for the Department of Defense, and my data was stolen from the Office of Personnel Management. So, for life, I have supposedly data protection. Here's what the Census Bureau has done. Census Bureau has all of the protections that the federal government would have, you know, all those acronyms, FBI, CIA, NSA, all of that. Then it has, it works with business to use all of the programs that you may use, such as Norton, McAfee, Panda, whatever that, that is, and then it has its own rapid response action teams. I've been witness to that, because when I go for training in, in Chicago, where my regional office is, there's an area that's absolutely closed to anybody unless they are coded. And these are the people who deal with data. So far, we've been attacked, and we're probably attacked every minute of the day, 24 hours, but our data has not been hacked. The data has not been...
Compromised.
Compromised, and in, in our, in the presentation that I have for you, there is, specifically because we are so concerned about it, there is slide 10 for you later to see how we have, we, we maintain a constant presence and response to anything that might come our way. For us, it's hard to say that, because we're secular, but it comes close to being sacred in terms of the data. For example, my, I swore for life that regardless of if I worked for them or not. So, I appreciate the question. We have not been successfully hacked, and as my mom would say, "Knock on wood, ain't gonna happen." But this is a, this is a critical question, and it's important. That's a question that people will ask from a trusted voice.
So, the census goes from January to July, then?
Actually, what happens is, we go in phases. Okay.
Yeah, that's why I was reading the phases, I didn't know, so does it end in July? Because it says the thank you phase is the start of July.
Right. What, what actually happens is, of course, April 1st, April Fool's Day, is our D-Day. That's the snapshot date. But we begin before, because we have group count, for example. We count the retirement homes and so on. We also have selected areas where there have been low responses, where there are enumerators who will go early. We send out the forms in March, and then we do a lot of follow-up, up to five follow-ups. Now, we can't do follow-ups everywhere, even though this is the largest civilian mobilization in Piscatain. Hundreds of thousands of people are going to be out there, including probably me, I'm probably going to be knocking on a door, which is okay, that's part of my job. But what we do is, in August, we continue with what we call the NARFU, non-response follow-up, because we want to make sure that everybody is given the opportunity to respond. So, for example, if there is no address, there are a lot of communities that only have PO boxes. In March, our enumerators physically go to addresses and invite people with a packet of information to answer. So, we really try to cover everything as much as possible, and that's, again, why we're doing it online, on the phone, and in paper. Footnote, I'm going to do mine on paper. That's me. But I, I, I have seen, because I work on this, this is not my work computer, I have three levels of security, it's, it's amazing. So, the, the people who will work out, the enumerators, will have pads, they will have security coded, and all of that. But I'm glad you asked. We do have to work in those phases, because we have so many unusual situations in terms of lack of addresses, want to straighten addresses. I think when I spoke with Deb, there was LUCA, which is the local construction, which is, I was with the county, which is reporting new construction. So, the census tries to be as comprehensive as possible. Again, you folks ask, ask excellent questions. I think you should have done my, my test, so that I pass. But no, I hope that answers your, your questions.
When, so after it's all counted and everything, we, do we get a copy of what Montrose's numbers and everything are?
In December of, 31st of 2020, it goes to the president. In April, it goes to the Congress for reapportionment, for the House of Representatives, and that information becomes public in April. So, right now, for example, with the tools that I've given you, you can actually see your data for now. We have via the census webpage and the links that are in your, in your presentation, and I'm going to resend a hard copy to Deb, because it's a PDF, and so you can click on it, and so can she, she can distribute it. You can do this search, and it really, there are some fascinating, there's fascinating data out there about your own community. So, for now, what we have is up to 2010 with the mail, and then 2017 with that American Community Survey, and that projects into the future. And then there are a variety of other tools in terms of business information, information for schools. The census has tried to provide information for anybody who may have an interest, businesses, those types of activities.
So, I have a question.
Yes.
So, if the city council proves this complete count committee, is that something to get it out in the public by even more, that they can do like a report to the city council on a regular basis of what they're doing?
You decide how that would work. What's most important is, once it's set up, it should be off of your shoulders, so to speak, and all that would happen is, the existing overhead might be used. That is, for example, this room is not being used, and the committee needs to meet. They meet here. That's how it would work. And then again, I would be happy to work with you in terms of the letter, but I can't write the letter for you. But it really is a very simple proposition, and then if it's signed by the mayor, and believe me, I'll be right back doing everything I can to get people motivated and excited.
And so, this, this committee is basically just to get the, the public to respond to everything?
And understand all of the dimensions of the census. Because, for example, if we could get it into the schools and the information, for example, into the curriculum, it's not the objective of the Complete Count Committee, but it helps, because that's free information, that enriches what we can do. So, there are a lot of options that exist. Just to end then, I'm going to the city of, October as far as Marine on St. Croix on Thursday, and I'll be talking with the library, because they are interested in working as a complete count committee within Marine on St. Croix. So, again, it really is anyone who may have the interest and who may have the time, and I really thank you for your time and your interest. Again, it's been a real privilege. Thank you for your questions.
Thank you. Do you have any more discussion? No? Okay. And I'm going to introduce our new city attorney.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm James Monje, I'm with the Campbell-Kunx and Ofer. Looking forward to working with all of you. Been working with cities for 19 years. The last four years I've been at Campbell-Kunx, and before that, I was at the Reebok Minnesota Cities for 15 years, where I did land use litigation, pre-camp and defense, and also worked in the research department there, helping cities with all kinds of municipal related questions. So, I would be forward to you, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. You're welcome. Thank you.
Do you have a card, if I change for you?
I do have cards, and I pass them around.
All right, well, welcome.
I can, I can just hand it down to you if you'd like. That's it. Thank you for taking us on.
James. Thank you. Well, if he worked for the Reebok Minnesota Cities for that many years, I know he's a good attorney, because they are a wonderful organization, so...
They work great, yes.
What made you go to a firm instead of a lady?
It was a, a new opportunity, they contacted me, so, made you an offer you couldn't refuse.
All right. Engineering discussion.
I was just asked to put this back on the agenda, so...
Well, with past history that we've been having, or past issues that we've been having here lately, I'd like to make a motion to cease new stuff with Wink and move back to Bolton-Wink.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Discussion?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm James Monje. I'm with the Campbell-Kunuson office. Looking forward to working with all of you. Been working with cities for 19 years. The last four years I've been at Campbell-Kunuson. Before that, I was at the Regent Minnesota Cities for 15 years, where I did land use litigation, pre-campagne defense, and also worked in the research department there helping cities with all kinds of municipal related questions. So I'm looking forward to you, and if you have any questions to me, I'd be happy to answer them. You're welcome. Thank you.
Do you have a card, if I change for you?
I do have cards.
Okay.
Pass them around.
All right, well, welcome.
I can, I can just hand it down too if you'd like. That's it. Thank you for taking us on.
Well, if he worked for the Regent Minnesota Cities for that many years, I know he's a good attorney because they are a wonderful organization, so.
They've always been great.
But why did you go to a firm instead of a lady?
It was a, a new opportunity. They contacted me, so made you an offer you couldn't refuse.
All right. Engineering discussion.
I was just asked to put this back on the agenda, so.
Well, with past history that we've been having, or past issues that we've been having here lately, I'd like to make a motion to cease new stuff with Wink and move back to Bolton Mank.
Yeah, let's look in that.
Discussion?
Wouldn't it be better if we did like we did before, interview different people and give the city a choice? I mean, you know, we let Bolton Mank go for several reasons.
And what were the reasons at the time? I wasn't on the council.
Well, there was hundreds of their attitudes.
Well, I know, I just don't want like a few specific ones.
Everything else was a problem there. There were several people that would probably have more to say about that than I did, but that's, that's one of the reasons.
Some of the reasons were the interaction with residents, the regional park, how that was handled. We had a lot of questions continually on billing, how they bill, just kind of itemizing it.
The billing was reached, changed to an itemized bill, correct?
Not at the end, no. No, it was well.
They were with us.
Well, they're still with us right now.
They are still with us on one side of it. Multiple times, we would ask, have to ask Justin for itemized billing. And when we did go up for RFPs, I did ask Justin to do a whole list of everything that he had done for the city, because it was quite a bit of things, you know. And unfortunately, Justin did not attend that meeting. He sent somebody else, which was kind of part of the reason why we went with Wink, because Justin didn't come in here, come in here. He sent that other member of their firm.
And when you ask a question to that person, oh, I didn't know about that. I got the check there. I don't know. Who's gonna hire a firm that sends people out that don't know? Well, Justin would have been there. He could have answered those questions.
Well, we still contact him on issues that they're not with us today, but he's still able to off the cuff give us answers though, too.
Right, because he spent, he was with the city for about 10 years.
So, and I just look at, you know, there's things that are, that are being held up by, by working with Wink right now, that to me, they're not doing us any service.
Not costing us more money.
Do we have examples of that? I missed the last meeting, so I don't know. I wasn't a part of that discussion, so.
So there, there was stuff that they were supposed to get Miles, was it correct, that they were like a month past?
They, yeah, on one of the projects in town, he was supposed to, Miles had sent him two different emails and asked him to get back to him. And the residents have talked to some of you, the business owners have talked to some of you and have talked to, actually have stopped some of our public works guys and talked to them because they were frustrated. And when I talked to Sean about it, he said I didn't get any emails from Miles. That was at our last City Council meeting. By the end of the meeting, he said, I did get emails from Miles, and I'll get back to him tomorrow.
And he didn't because they stopped in here on Friday, and they still hadn't answered.
So.
And I'm confused.
That's an ongoing issue.
Miles sent Wink, sent Sean and Wink a question for an answer, for a question that somebody had here in town.
A business owner, because we could, they couldn't move forward with what they wanted to do with their project.
And Sean didn't get back to them. And Monday night, on the 12th of August, Sean said he'd get back to them the next day. They were just here, the resident or the business owner was just here on Friday, and he still hasn't heard from Sean.
Shouldn't that have been a question that should have went to our city attorney? I mean, I don't know why.
Well, no. It's engineering questions.
Is it new business or?
It's a new business.
Okay, because my understanding is the new businesses that are coming into town, I've been told on numerous occasions that we have given them the information, and the new business people are not bringing it back to the city.
Something.
Right, so this is all, this is all part of everything. We need the full facts on everything?
This is the full fact on this particular business. They can't bring their information back to the city because they were waiting to hear from Sean, and they couldn't complete what information they needed to complete until they heard back from Sean.
And as of Friday, they still hadn't heard from him.
And one of the other examples that was brought up, it was with lots, right, for housing lots, someone did that, right? They suddenly do it.
Oh, yes.
And it was, they were reviewing, they were, they were looking at less and actually charging more.
For the building permits.
And taking more.
Right. But in our slide, in our fee schedule, we accommodated that at the beginning, beginning of the year.
So the, or the assessor.
We changed our billing permit fees also. We had to raise them because Wink was charging us more than we.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We accommodated what exactly you're talking about.
But probably not any higher than the other cities on fees, or probably lower.
But the bottom line is the taxpayers are paying more money for the same service. And, you know, if they charge more, we, we have to increase our fees, which isn't fair to the public.
I don't disagree with that. I know back a few months ago, we did bring in Sean's boss and with these concerns. Has anybody said anything recently about, I mean, reached out to Sean or, I don't remember his boss's name, or maybe looking at getting, replacing Sean even, instead of the whole firm?
Well, I think the bottom line is, you know, make this more of a, I don't think their, I think their coverage is mainly environmental projects, not necessarily the kinds of things that we do here in the city. And I think that's why we're paying more money, because we're actually paying for their learning curve to get them up to speed with a lot of these things. You know? And it's like, how long do we let this go? We continue paying more money.
My thought is, as we look at, I look at the projects, like I said, that we did previously with Bolton Mank, and I like Justin. I mean, Justin, like you said, he's always there whenever you have a question. I can even reach out to him right now, and he'll have an answer for me. But the whole regional park was not handled very well, and last council meeting, we still have misinformation on that. So, and that's all comes from Justin.
There was no misinformation from Justin on that?
Well, there was misinformation somewhere along the way.
From a former employee?
It was one of our employees, Justin Strain, the dog.
Yeah, there, that road is right where it belongs. That's why we said last week.
We got the correct information from Justin.
Right, and I'm aware of that, but that information still went out incorrectly. And that property was surveyed five times.
But that's from an ex-employee. How can we stop an ex-employee saying something that didn't come from the engineer?
But the fact of the matter is, is that engineer surveyed that same property five, six times, which costed us a ton of money. And we still don't, we're still having problems with that issue. So, I mean, are we, in one hand?
It's not the surveyor's fault.
Well, whose fault is it? It's under, it's under the engineer's responsibility to make sure that these things are done correctly. Four, five, six times is not correctly. So, I mean, you can, like I said, I like Justin, but there's pros and cons of everything. In the last meeting, I mean, you guys were saying that we're kind of comparing apples to apples, but we really can't because they're doing all these different projects. If you go back and look at the invoices from Bolton Mank, an example is, during the regional park, it would say labor of 106 hours for, I'm making up these numbers, so y'all know that, $30,000, and it just said labor 106, 106 hours. And when we have, we shouldn't have to go back and ask for all of that itemized, why were you here, what were you doing? So when you talk about Wink not giving us itemized billing, it's tit for tat, really. So.
Well, I think collectively, it's our responsibility to make sure that an engineering company or anybody else providing services to the city, we have an explanation, say, here's what our expectations are in terms of billing, and if they don't live up to it, they're out the door. You know, if they continue to do this and nobody says anything.
The same way we did Bolton Mank. We asked for the expectations.
We're having the same thing now with these people.
We are, but so then we're just gonna go back.
But by the end, Bolton Mank provided, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, Wendy, they provided the itemized billing that the city requested.
And they do. And it's, I mean, they provide itemized billing, but what you're asking for is impossible when it comes to engineering. You can't ask somebody that, okay, they put in 106 hours out there, what did you do in 106 hours? Well, they're not gonna sit there and say, okay, for five hours on Wednesday, I watched the grader, make sure he graded the right thing, and on five hours on Thursday.
I would expect them to say, in 106 hours, I wasn't just on site. Because if you recall that project, you guys knew, but I think, were you remembering that? Multiple times, we were called out there, and no council members, I was the only one that was continually out there checking on this project. I mean, you can ask April for that information, but she will tell you.
That's coming from one person, and you just said her name.
Right. April will live right there on the project, as myself, being right there working, side by, I mean, not working, but talking with engineers almost daily, and they were frustrated with not getting information from Justin. They were waiting on multiple things. What, what's the guy's name? Justin's partner?
Oh, I can't remember.
I don't remember what his name was, but.
He was supposed to oversee the project.
Oversee stuff, and they, the engine, the army would be sitting out there waiting. During the biggest project we have in the city, saving the taxpayers $600,000, our engineer and our public works director weren't even there half the time. So I have a really hard time going back to Justin. Like I said, he's a great guy, and he'll probably continue to help with whatever, but that was a huge project, and it was kind of not a, we're still having issues out there. So.
The things we're talking about are things that need to be remedied collectively by the City Council.
Right.
No matter who, who we're talking about. So, you know, it's really up to us to keep whoever's providing services to the city on straight and narrow.
I don't disagree.
The type of service, the quality of service, and the, the amount of service that we expect.
I, I don't disagree with that.
I don't think we can sit here and tell the taxpayers that, well, yeah, we have problems with these people, and these people here are costing us more money, so we're gonna keep them.
But we can't really compare the two, because we had Justin for 10 years, and we've only had Bolton Mank on a handful.
I mean, Wink, Pilk.
I'm sorry, yeah, Wink, for the major project of Highway 25. And when we were running behind on that, we pulled everybody in, and.
But we just said we raised permitting fees because they were charging more money for the same services that Bolton Mank is charging us, and they're taking over.
I, I'm not disagreeing with anybody, but why are we gonna go back to an engineering firm that caused us, not necessarily the same problems, but problems nonetheless, we should be looking at, if, I mean, if we have.
If you're, if you're going to the, with what happened out at the regional park, I think no matter who we had, I think April would have had problems with, with anyone.
I'm not saying April, and I'm not gonna, I mean, I said April because she lives out there, but being out there, Justin wasn't out there. We still don't even have half of the information that we needed from that. Do we have like the soil board? I don't even know what half of that stuff means, honestly. But do we have all of that information for all the surveying that they did? Where, where is all that?
And probably Sean's probably ways off of somewhere.
And I think Sean and the crew was upset too, that when they first surveyed that, they were the work to do some of themselves, or surveying mistakes were all wrong, and it went Bolton Mank had to come back and redo it.
I mean, again, I'm not saying that we don't need to look at the issues that we're having with Wink, but I don't know if it's necessarily in the best interest even to go back to Bolton Mank. It's kind of confusing, they're too similar, so.
Well, we got regional park, Justin and Sean, they were on vacation. And one of them should have been out there at the regional park.
We could be mad at Justin for that, but former employees, they're, they're not here, so we can't.
Well, I know, but that's what happened, you know.
So, so what you're saying is he went on vacation just because we were doing a project? Well, there's lots of projects that, so he's still on vacations.
They didn't, if you're doing something that urgent, I wouldn't think that both of them would be gone. Because those guys out there got a question, who were they gonna ask?
We, we knew that the Army Corps.
The two people that they're supposed to ask was gone.
Do we have documentation of all of this? Because I just feel like there's a lot of hearsay going on right now. Do we have documentation?
On what?
These issues and things that were said.
It should be in Bolton Mank's. There's emails back and forth from me as well. Like I said, I sat in on every Monday and Thursday meeting with the engineer and the Army Corps here in the office, and there were times when Justin wasn't even here to take care of the issues that we needed to take care of. They're sitting there waiting to do things. We have no engineer, we had no public works director, and it was just, I mean, that, we're just using that example because it was.
See, they were only gone one week.
Each of them, well, each of them. Sean was gone during the process, Justin was gone during the process, and we've known, we knew for a year that those guys were coming. Very poor timing on their part for a very large project that saved the taxpayers $600,000. But again, I get where we need to take care of the problems with Wink, but I don't think actually going back to Bolton Mank is the best decision either.
So no matter what, you agree that we probably need to look at new engineering firm, but if we go off for, what are they called, RFPs? Bolton Mank's not going to put one in because they just.
Everybody just.
Why wouldn't they put one in? Are they afraid of?
They're not gonna redo.
It costs, it costs the engineering firms quite a bit of money to do, and you just did one in April last year. So I don't know how many people you could respond quite frankly.
Well, why are we worried what it costs them?
Because of the lack of participation, I think that's what they're saying.
That's what we have to worry about.
So what we should do is, that's one reason too, I'm against having these council meetings 3:30 in the afternoon, so nobody can be here.
That's totally different than what we're doing right now, though.
Well, no, but we'd have a lot of other people here talking about why they were happy we got rid of Bolton Mank.
We, we have a couple of really big projects coming up, and if I remember what you said last month correctly, is that we're having issues with Wink replying in any kind of a timely fashion right now, and we're supposed to be involved in the next year or two with basically redoing the entire downtown area over here, and if they're not replying in a timely manner, we're gonna end up worse than what we did with the regional park, which it turns out totally fine.
Regional park is not totally fine to be bent out there? The answer then would be no.
What's, what's wrong with that?
There's multiple issues out there. We sent Bolton Mank, we, two, three times to re-bring the people out to clean up all the rocks. There's numerous things out there, the rocks, the, there's, there's a lot that has to be done out there.
Are the rocks okay, Lynn? Are you mowing?
Yeah, they're mowing, it's fine. I don't know.
I mean, you can go out, the big.
What rocks?
The big ruts that are out there that all have to be taken care of. We're not even maintaining the, the regional park the way we should be doing it.
The ruts for driving on it?
No, no, in the fields.
There's a few spots that are washouts.
Which is all gonna happen with new grading, no matter what, I mean, anytime you do new grading, there's gonna be rocks.
So no, I mean.
Go back and fill them, that settles.
What's your reason for changing? I mean, you're, you're in direct contact with Wink.
I mean, I'll work with any of them, I mean, you know, whatever you guys.
But I know, but have you had any problems with?
A little bit, you know, I've been slow on a few things, but other than, if I need something, they actually, they get it for me.
So, yeah, I don't, I don't think there's a reason to change either. If we're gonna change, then we should go all the way and put RFPs or whatever you want, and, and give everybody a fair chance.
Can we take?
What is, uh?
RFPs or RFPs or an apple? Can I put those, can I put new ones? Put new ones together?
It's not, there's not really a legal element to this, but I think if you have one firm that you were dissatisfied with, and you have some dissatisfaction with the current firm, then it makes sense to do the RFP to see who makes a proposal and then make a choice for the most.
Right. That's the way I feel.
Do we have enough specifics where we could put something together that they can respond to in terms of cost for this, cost for that, kind of?
To Wink?
Everyone.
Everyone.
I don't know if they, when they do an RFP, I don't know if they get that specific. They usually do an hourly wage. And Wink's hourly wage is higher than Bolton Mank's.
So that's all they do, is an hourly wage?
I think.
Hourly wage, um.
And a percentage of like big projects, what their percentage is.
And their percentage was pretty, pretty similar.
I can't remember what else they put in.
And again, like I said, if there's an issue with, I mean, this has been brought up multiple times with staff. And again, like I said, if there's an issue with, I mean, this has been brought up multiple times with staff, that if there's an issue with Sean not getting back, and if you guys had a meeting a month ago, we should've actually called Sean in, said, "Hey, what's the deal?" Or, and not necessarily Sean, his boss, and said, "You know what? We've had you in once before, and you're, Sean's still not up to par. Do we need to switch firms? Do we need to switch engineers? What do we need to do to make sure..."
You could've said that the same thing with Justin and Bolton and Mink, too.
And I did. I did do that.
Okay, so what was the result of that?
We don't have Bolton and Mink anymore.
They didn't respond, or?
I mean, they came in, Justin came in, and like I said, right at the end...
Did you have his boss come in?
No. We continually went with Justin, and at the end, I said, "Justin, you know, we really want," I sat with him and Sean, and I said, "We would really want to just see you stay. Can you please give me to show the council everything you've done?" And there was a few things he even forgot that he had done for us. I said, "Don't forget to add this." Well, the day that we went out for RFPs, we're sitting there and Justin doesn't show up. He sent in some guy with, like, zero personality, and I'm like, "You can't even come in to defend what I'm asking you to do. I'm asking you to show an itemized billing, I'm asking you to do A, B, and C," and he didn't come in. So, I mean, if he would've, we could possibly still have Bolton and Mink, but he didn't. He didn't come because he had been at council meetings previously and got berated for months on end. I think he figured it didn't pay for him to come, to be honest with you.
And he had told me too, that he got beat up so bad by the city council all the time, that he just wasn't going to... He wasn't going to come in.
So then, I think we go out for RFPs. But we should first talk to Sean's boss, get him in here at the meeting, and see what he has to say about it.
Does staff have any say in this? Since we're the ones that have to work with them?
I mean, to me, you should.
I mean, I mean, because...
You should be able to have, you know, express your concerns, pros and cons with both firms.
I was gonna say, what we've been doing is expressing our concerns, because we're not getting responses. He may answer Wayne, but he doesn't answer Deb and I.
No. And he doesn't always answer you right away either.
Well, no, but he does answer.
We've only had him a year, and we've already had to bring him in once and talk to him. Why do we have to bring him in again to talk to him? We had Bolton and Mink for ten or 12 years, and we never had to talk to anybody about getting stuff done. And you asked for more itemized invoice, and they gave us more itemized invoices.
We asked for more accountability and everything, but, again, like I said, he didn't come in and he didn't show up.
Well, I don't have any problems with his, with Justin's invoices. They were itemized after you asked for them. So I don't, I mean, they were easy to work with, I can say that, and they were more responsive than what we get from Wink.
And they don't, they don't even work for us anymore, and I call and I get answered within five minutes on a question. And one of the things that we were just talking about is we have someone that's interested out on the preserved property, and Justin knows that property inside and out. We're kind of having problems with that right now with Sean, because he doesn't know the property. And so we've been really thinking about that, too. Because it'll, it'll take more time again for Sean, and it'll take more...
More money?
Yeah.
But that'll be paid by the developers.
Yes, but they wanna get going on things, and it takes more time.
But if it takes longer, and they lose interest in it, and go to a different city that they can jump on right away...
And if it gets to be where it's not cost-effective for them anymore, they'll be gone.
On free land, there's not very many developers gonna jump off that.
It's not so free. There's a lot that has to be done out there, so it's not such free land. We're not selling it to them, but all the water and sewer has to all be redone, so it's gonna be very expensive. And it's gonna be hard to find somebody to take it, so we need, we need an engineer that's gonna be able to work with these guys and get this taken care of, or they're gonna walk the other way. And we don't have anybody else that's knocking at the door for that property.
And the, and the RFP process is a lot of work for staff as well, so...
So we, today's the 26th, our next council meeting is on the night. Do we schedule something with Wink? Giving them our concerns with Sean's boss as well, looking possibly at a different engineer coming in? It's only two weeks until our next council meeting. Talk to him about the concerns on the preserves, and go from there. You have a motion on this?
If we're going, if we're going that way, and that's the case, then I would wanna see his boss at that council meeting, period. Otherwise, it wouldn't matter. I mean...
Right, right.
I...
That's what we will ask him.
If he's not there, then it's, I mean, this motion will come up again at the next council meeting, and it'll be out right away, and whether or not it's going back to Bolton and Mink or going to RFPs, you're not listening to our city attorney.
Well, he, yes, he did. He said either...
The best way to do it is to go RF.
Well, he said either Bolton and Mink or the RFP. He's, that's what he said, so...
Well, you had trouble with them, we replaced them, and then we got trouble with the one we got. So you don't wanna deal with either one of them.
So we go out for RFPs.
Most certain people had trouble with Bolton and Mink, not very many people had trouble with them.
Speaking for the company, or the property that my boss bought here in town, we had questions with things. He reached out to Justin and to Sean, former public direct, public works director. We got answers right away. They came out, they reviewed stuff with us, they gave us what the options were. And my interactions with, with him, I never, when he wasn't able to give me a on-the-spot answer, it was within a reasonable amount of time. Because we do have issues out at our property that are, you know, whatever's going on is going on. But they came out and they, they helped us with what we can do to remedy it in very timely fashion, and shared the information with us where to buy the product from, what, you know, what to use, and, you know, so...
But you go out to Milhousens and talk to them, when they were trying to...
That was a nightmare.
Increase their business. Sean raked them over the coals.
Justin.
Or Justin, I don't know. First he come out on one plan and said it was this way, and then it was supposed to be another way, and we charged Milhousens thousands of dollars extra. They just about backed out of that deal because of Justin.
All we did was made them follow our comprehensive plan, saying that they had tarred their yard.
He has to make them follow a comprehensive plan.
He was just making them follow the plan and told them that they had to pay that lot.
No, there was something about it.
That plan changed Mol...
Because Mol, because Mindot changed it, because Mindot told them they had to change their driveway.
Yeah, it's just like when they talked about that walking path, too. Right away, Bolton and Mink was out there surveying, and then they found out from the state that, "Well, you can't put a deal there, because we're gonna redo that highway in a couple of years."
That's not why we couldn't do it. We couldn't do it because they didn't have any right-of-way through there. It was all prescriptive right-of-way. Had nothing to do with doing any projects or anything else. Did you know that that was only prescriptive right-of-way? Nobody knew that until they went back to the county or the state and found out.
So Justin didn't know that either, evidently. He went out there...
I'm pretty sure nobody would've known that.
Surveying him.
I mean, there's, there's pros and cons, but there was only certain people that didn't like Bolton and Mink. I mean, staff worked very well with them, so... And I don't have anything against Sean. I mean, Sean's a great guy. It just, it seems like we wait forever to get answers.
Any more discussion?
I don't.
Okay, we have a motion.
I, my only thing is, if his boss is not at that meeting in two weeks, it doesn't matter what we go with, Bolton and Mink, RFPs, it's gonna have to change because we're being charged a substantial amount more money if they did the exact same amount of work as what they used to do, Wink for what Bolton and Mink used to do. So if he's not there, then they're not too interested.
We'll give him a chance to get there.
I have against Wink to everybody, council, citizens.
Mainly for the citizens themselves.
Okay, then Kirby, I need a vote from you.
No.
Tom?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
No. Lloyd?
No.
Okay, motion fails. Three, two. Do we wanna have a meeting with them before the council meeting, so that we can have it on the agenda? If we can? Deb, can you try and set up something?
I would just request that, just...
Who's gonna attend that meeting?
Council.
Okay.
Do you want to put a special council meeting in between this meeting and the next council meeting?
Beforehand? I mean, even if we did a six o'clock that Monday?
For what?
A special council meeting with the engineer.
Right, for what purpose, though? Like I said, I'd want him at the council meeting, so that our questions we have to ask is, he's answering it to all of us on tape, to the citizens, anybody can see it, they can hear it, whatever. You can make our decision there. You know, if he doesn't come, or if he, I don't know, I mean, if they're just not that interested, and they say it's too much hassle.
Okay. I mean, at that time, they could say, "You know what? This is too much for us, and we're not equipped to do this," so then...
Then we go out to RFPs like the city attorney says.
Well, whatever. A decision, okay. Code enforcement?
Just an update on code enforcement. We have sent out a forty, a total of 48 requests for items that are not in compliance with the city's code. There's been four pools that don't have fencing, parking pads, we have 19 of those, and that's properties where boats or campers are parked on the grass beside the garage, or trailers. Tall grass and weeds, we have eight. Rubbish or blight or, or different things in the yard, we have 15 of those, and people having boats parked in the street, we have two. There are some other ones that we've identified that we have not sent a letter out to. And of those 48 items that have been sent out, 31 have complied, so...
But we still got some old remaining ones.
Yes.
Yeah, we do have a downy thing.
I'm just aware of it, I'm gonna talk about that right now. I put 123 Hill Street on here because they have the chicken wire fence, and our ordinance is, the way it is written, doesn't really give me a lot of teeth to do anything, and so I'm just asking you, here's a picture of the chicken wire fence that's on the property, and you've received an email about it. I am just asking you for direction on removing the chicken wire from the fence.
What does the ordinance say about it?
It should be gone.
And what, what did you say about the ordinance?
It shouldn't be there.
It should be there.
But we don't have anything in our ordinance that says what we can do to them if they don't take it down, is what she's saying. We have no teeth in there. We have nothing that says, "We're gonna come back and throw you in jail, and we're gonna come back and fine you," and, you know, we don't have anything in our ordinance that says what we can do to them, right?
And, and this has been going before my time. This has been two city clerks ago already, so...
Doesn't half the party in the house say they'll take it down, and the other half?
Yes.
So we're hoping if you guys make a motion and say, "Remove it," that we can go back and now say, "City council has taken action," so you have to take it down?
Well, yeah, it's not, it's not in, and I agree with the ordinance. I say, "Take it down."
Right, that's what that's...
I'll make the motion for city staff to reach out to them stating that city council has made the decision that the chicken wire needs to come down.
No, second.
Okay, Lloyd?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Kirby?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Motion passes by zero.
So now hopefully she can go back to him and say, "Council has made the motion," so maybe they'll be reaching out.
What are the, is there a list of different fines that we have as a city for different ordinance violations?
I don't know that we have any, that's the problem.
So that's something that we should probably come up with of...
Remember when that was all coming up, and they were trying to put that in, it was like Dale's last meeting, I think?
Yeah.
He was trying to get it passed, because we used to have, years ago, we had, if you didn't comply, there was like a hundred dollar fine. And if you didn't comply by the time of that fine, we had the right to increase it like five percent on us. It was a daily or weekly basis or something?
If they didn't pay, it went on their...
Yeah, but then all that changed, and, and then there was no fine, and I think he was trying to bring one back, but what he was doing wasn't making a lot of sense.
Oh, God, he wanted to do a hundred dollar fine, and every day they didn't comply was a hundred bucks.
Yeah, so that didn't get passed, so there really is nothing out there that says, "We're gonna fine you," or "We're gonna do anything," so... That might be something that has to be looked at.
Well, I think it'd be good to look at something like that, as well as a schedule for it, because as it sits right now, it's just, you know, it's tough if you're not out there every week looking at the same ordinance violation that's going on. I mean, it could be two, three weeks, then another letter, then another two, three weeks, and then after you warn them twice, and then fine them, by that point, it's already a couple of months down the road, and...
If it's something that's like a hazard to the public, or some kind of a big nuisance, like lawn weeds type of thing, you know, we give them so many days, and then we say, "We're gonna cut it, and we're gonna charge you our hourly rate." But there's only certain things we can do that way, and, you know, so... That may be something that has to be looked at, and to put a fine back in it.
Plenty and Zoney has been made aware of that, that we need to work on that, yeah.
I think they started the process with our city planner, wouldn't it, to go through all of the regulations and stuff and fine-tune them? You know, because my fear with, you know, regulation and code enforcement is that we're gonna chase everybody out of town. We get too stringent with things, okay? And where you, where you draw that line is, is kinda what we decide on, you know? Because there are some people that, they have temporary situations, and, you know, they'll get a letter that says, you know, they gotta correct things, and I think the whole thing revolves around communication with people, you know? Finding out, like Alan Torgelson, you know, he, he's got his, his little camper on the grass, and he finds out putting a concrete pad in there. Every time I see him, I ask him when he's gonna put that in there, but, you know, he says, "When in a couple of months," so I'm taking, taking his word on that. If he doesn't, then we have to take some action, you know?
But there's really nothing that...
In a couple of months, it won't be too late to blue any, just in any problem.
No, he, he can get it.
Can you stay in until November?
And with that example, that's what I'm talking about, there's really no teeth in the ordinance, because we have got some parking pads that were put in, people that talked to us, and we said, "This is what you have to do," and also we turn around and they have them in, and they didn't follow the regulations. You look at the ordinance sign, I want you to open it.
Yeah, there's nothing that's...
There's really nothing you can do, yeah.
Do you have any suggestions on how to?
Typically, your zoning code or your nuisance code is gonna have a penalty provision. Usually it's gonna make a violation, a misdemeanor, and also have a fine attached to it. State law, that's the limit, and the upper end of what a fine can be. It's a common provision in, in most codes, so, I mean, we could take a look at that and put in. One of the things I did at the league was draft, it was called Minnesota Basic Code, it's a universal code that cities in Minnesota can adopt. And I know that that has provisions in it for penalties, so, I mean, we could pull the language right from there.
Okay, perfect.
And you said, correct me if I'm wrong, Deb, you said 31 out of 48 have complied?
Mm-hmm. Can you send us a copy of that?
I cannot, because it has addresses and stuff on it, so...
Okay.
Can you, since we're on the topic of ordinances, do you know if they're looking at any other ordinances or anything like that, else like that? I mean, it's, I get some of the stuff is redundant in there, but reading through some of the ordinances, some of them looks like they could be changed or taken away, just kinda like Tom said, where it's, we get to be so nitpicky on what our, you know, our neighbors or, or people that we drive by their house every day, what they can or can't do with their own property. We get so nitpicky on it, and people are just, they're just gonna say, "It's not worth the hassle, I'll just sell the house and move," and...
If you got violators, it'd be better for the city if they didn't move. I mean, you don't, we got, we got this new committee now, they, they should be involved in this, too, about beautifying the city. Having that chicken wire fence on there, for one thing, that's not beautifying the city.
Let's not start the discussion...
That's already done. Let's not even go back there. That's already done.
I don't think that we wanna say that we wanna beautify the community by driving residents out of town. It's not a, that's not something we wanna say, but you are right, and quite frankly, I know that they just changed the ordinance, but this ordinance where they can't have a boat parked next to their garage on the grass, I really question that one, and the reason I question is because people are mowing underneath those boats, and it doesn't look bad, and they don't have room for their driveways, and so I know it just got passed, but that's one that, as I'm doing this, I think, I don't know about that one, so...
I don't know about that one, so-
You're saying it's good or bad?
I don't see a problem with it being parked next to their garage on grass as long as they mow the grass, because they don't have the money to build the parking pad. They don't have the room to put it on their driveway and they can't have it on the street.
Then you find storage. Because there, this, oh my God, this was a debate for a year.
So, and I don't want to debate it now, but-
Right, no, okay.
Just, just one-
We already allowed three, three things.
The, the I don't necessarily want to nitpick every little thing that, that people can do and like what they can or can't advertise for in the front of their store on, you know, they can only say they're selling gas. Just little things like that are in these ordinances that are either here now or that are coming up and I don't want to nitpick everything, I mean-
The sign, the sign ordinance, I can tell you, um Miles was working with the former city attorney, because there is a lot that's regulated now in the state statute of what can be on signs, so, um, that's being addressed in accordance with that. So, um, that one is pretty much going according to state statute.
But maybe before we go into the signs, we should finish up the ordinance, the real cause of everything.
The streetscape committee asked us to look at the sign ordinance, so that's why we looked at that next and quite frankly-
Who asked you to look at it?
Streetscape committee. And quite frankly, to be honest with you, it doesn't matter what order we go in, because almost any entire ordinance needs to be looked at. We've determined that.
Well, let's go on the the bad ones first, don't worry about the signs.
Have you seen the signs?
A lot of the signs are going to be they're going to stay there anyway, because they've been there for so long.
But you, but you asked me to start up the streetscape committee, Dan. That was one of the first things you said when you interviewed me, so I did. And that was one of the directives that they had in some of their very first meetings, so that's why we looked at the sign ordinance.
And the sign ordinance, they're bringing that up because Highway twelve, with all of these
I took pictures-
The buttons, yeah.
I took pictures for the planning zoning commission and, um, I guess it was a real eye-opener for me, because there's a lot of awful-looking signs on Highway twelve, and that's our main corridor.
Right.
So... And it's not signs that are in place, we're talking about-
Fifty feet go up, lamenta.
Yeah, we're talking about portable signs, we're not talking about-
Permanent signs.
Yeah, but I shouldn't say that, some of the permit signs are very bad condition and the ordinance, Wade Miles, um, has written it, is that those signs will need to be addressed and will need to be either taken down or redone. So...
That's all I have with the ordinance stuff. Sorry, you have to-
All right. Uh, franchise fees?
Okay, um, that was another thing that I was asked to look at when I first started here and, um James, I'm going to let you interject if you need to. Um, we did work with we did meet with, uh, Excel Energy, we met with Wright-Hennepin Electric and we have got to have an ordinance in place by the September meeting, because they need, what is the ninety days for that they is it to let the customers know or?
They need ninety days implementing in their system.
Okay, because we want to do it January first and they were really happy about that, because it does take time, it's a process. Um, so I gave you the proposed resolutions for gas and electric and they are for Excel, but the same electric one would be used for Wright-Hennepin. What you have to decide is what you want to do for fees, and so I did get some information together and, um, we've looked at cities, um, some of the cities around us don't have franchise fees, so we looked at cities that are similar in population to ours and, um, you could really go with any amount, I can tell you that when we met with both, we met with them separately, we met with Excel Energy, we met with Wright-Hennepin, both of them recommended four dollars for residential and eight dollars for commercial. I don't know why they recommended that or where that number came from, but, um, it does vary, so...
But you don't have any of what other cities are doing?
No.
Oh, I have a lot.
This is, this ordinance came from, oh, you mean Dollarwise?
Yeah, Dollarwise.
He sends us quite a few, but it's all over the board, yeah.
So now, are these, uh, are these fees per meter or are these fees per like, for like a commercial lot? So is that per meter or is that per?
Per PID. Um, if, if you remember, your former city clerk was working on that and he wanted to do it by per meter and Excel Energy- Yes, Excel Energy and Wright-Hennepin said they've never even heard of that.
Okay.
It's never, they've not ever done that, it's always by PID.
Okay.
So...
And some of them do, they do like it goes anywhere from one dollar to six or seven dollars, I think. But a lot of them, I mean, the average is around four and that's what both Excel and Wright-Hennepin told us. And then they also go by, when they go to, um, commercial, most of them just double it, so they do four and eight, and then some of them even go with like a large user, um, large industrial users and they even go higher than that, but here, we really don't have that, so we would just do four and eight.
How come the cities around us don't really have it, do you know?
Well, Delano has their own electric.
And Buffalo has its own electric.
So...
So, um-
What about Watertown?
I think they, do they have it?
They're not on here.
Or Winston?
This is everybody in the area, Winston, I know has franchise fees, because I'm the one that implemented it.
Big Lake has it.
Oh, yeah, Big Lake just did theirs, I think.
Couple of years ago.
Yeah, Big Lake is on here, they have four for residential and eight for small.
And Delano, Delano does do it for gas, they just don't do it for electric as they're on a lot of property. So they do do it for gas, so that's-
And I know Winston does have it and I know theirs is four dollars, um, and I'm not sure what the commercial is, I don't remember that, but I remember residential's.
Yeah, they're about the same size, so...
A lot of the larger cities don't do quite as much and they do lower, because they have bigger population, but...
I think one of the things maybe that they were looking at was that we are looked at as being more in metro, so I think they were looking at a price that's more in the metro area and so if you would implement, um, at four and eight, that would mean that, um, your estimated annual franchise fees for electric, this is just for Excel, would be sixty-six thousand three hundred eighty-four. And, um, then Wright-Hennepin has a hundred and fourteen PID's, thirteen, a residential, one is commercial. And then, um, for gas, you're looking at an estimated, if you go four and eight again, um, you're looking at an estimated sixty-one thousand seven hundred seventy-six. And just so you know, for electric, um, we only have residential, commercial, non-demand and commercial demand. And so, um, that was plugging in four dollars for residential and then eight for each of those, that's what most people do, is the same. And then we only have residential, commercial, firm, non-demand, um, so it would be four for residential and a commercial, non-demand would be eight, that's the only things we have.
So we'd be looking at like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in a year that we'd be taking in.
And the residence about twelve dollars a month. At four dollars for this and four dollars for that.
So eight dollars. Eight dollars per month.
Per month.
It's per month?
Yeah, so eight dollars.
So it doesn't have to be that amount, I think you can set it at something else if you want to, but...
Um, but we were looking at this, I mean, we started looking at this a couple of years ago. Trying to decide how we're going to fund our entire downtown. Revitalize, our re reconstruction of the whole downtown and how we're going to pay to get our regional park up and going and how we're going to so one of the things was franchise fees, so...
And that's why the city of Winston did it, for those reasons. I don't think there's anything or?
Actually, when we started looking into it, we found out that we're one of the few that doesn't do it. A lot of them have gone to it already, so...
But Watertown wasn't on this list, this is a list of who they, um, their report for their tariffs and Watertown was not on it. It's every, a lot of other cities across the state, but not Watertown.
You said it's about eight dollars a month to each household?
And that would be sixteen to commercial.
Twelve, twelve dollars for household. Eight.
Four.
Four for electric?
Oh, yeah.
Eight is ninety-six dollars a year. Okay. Make a motion to, uh go ahead and, uh, establish the, uh franchise fees at four dollars for residential and eight dollars for business for both electric and gas.
I'll stop at that. Any discussion? All right, I'll vote aye. Ben?
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Kirby?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Motion passes by zero.
So... Will I just work with you to get this ready for the September meeting? Okay, thank you. Okay. And the last thing that, um, I have on the agenda is we met with the, we have our telephones right now through Central Telephone systems. Central Telephone sales and service and the reason why we contacted them is from the day that I started here, I cannot hear in my telephone. I cannot hear when people call me and I cannot hear when I have a voicemail message and, um, Jess and Wendy will attest to that, because we call people in the office and we can't understand what they're saying. And I've been really frustrated with that, I thought maybe it was not hearing, but what it is is, um all of our phone systems are run through their voice IPs.
They're both voice-over IP through Comcast internet service.
So it's the same internet that's running all of our computers and so we, our calls drop a lot, they're staticky, you can't hear people, they, they go in and out. Um, and it's happening to all of us. And the big thing is, is that we do not have phone systems where we really noticed it now that Heidi's on board, she's way in the back office. Wendy, Heidi and I cannot see when Justice Phone rings and so if we're lucky to hear it, we have to run up front to answer it. And so that's an inadequate system for this, this city office. And so the system that they're proposing uh, is a system where Wendy, Heidi and I can see if Justice Phone rings and we can answer it. And, um, it also allows us from our offices to park any phone calls that we get and transfer when we need to, we can't do that right now. Or park them and then, um, call the person, say, you have a call on this line and that person can simply pick up that line.
Yep.
We don't even have to transfer it. So, and, and he gave us a quote and figuring it out, um the finance, sent, uh, deputy clerk Wendy does the finance and we do have money in the budget, um, we would save two thousand dollars if we just buy it outright for nine thousand, nine thousand... Nine thousand forty-five.
You're looking at eleven eight oh nine to lease it.
Yeah.
Sixteen months, yeah.
And you can buy it for nine thousand.
What's, what's our phone bill stuff now through Comcast, what's that?
Well, right now, we pay, so we pay Star to Star, which is the phone company. We pay Comcast, who's the internet service. And we pay Comcast over six hundred dollars a month alone, which is for our internet service and our phones.
Yep.
Then we also pay Star to Star at three hundred and some dollars for the phone service. So we're paying out over a thousand dollars for that.
That's received a month.
It's, it's going to be a decrease in the monthly bills for all of it and Comcast has actually brought their bill down five hundred thirty-three dollars, maybe even more. Um, and they're going to triple our speed here, they were shocked at how slow and how outdated our system is here.
Because we had the voice-over IP before, we had to have the IP static, which we're, this, these will not be voice-over IPs anymore. You know, ten years ago, when we got the phone service, it was the thing to have. But ten years ago, they, you know, now the technology is so much different, so it'll actually come in on its own phone line.
Yep.
So it'll take it away from our internet service, we won't get the dropped calls. We don't have to have the, the static IP, so it drops every phone bill twenty bucks a month. We no longer will be paying Star to Star, they'll be gone, it'll just be through, um, Central Telephone and and we'll still just be paying our internet service to Comcast.
Oh, and Star to Star is not a real workable system to work with, like when we have to let's say you want to leave a voicemail, because you're on vacation and tell people what to do. You have to go into the computer and do it, it's, it's not real user-friendly, this is just a click, click and you're done.
Yeah, we use something similar to this in my work, so...
And then, um the other thing is that we evaluated the telephones that we have throughout the city and there were some that we could eliminate. We're not getting rid of the numbers, because if you ever have future staff that you expand, um those phone numbers are still there and they just need to bring a phone in, so we're getting rid of the phones that we don't need.
They're actually bringing in twenty-five lines to us. We just only use so many of them for now, but they'll be there if we ever need them.
And you guys will all get a list too, of like extensions from phones, right?
And then the, this price also includes that they do, uh, several different trainings for staff.
So there's actually eleven phones spaced out.
Yes. And that's between wastewater treatment, PLS, Public Works, Fire Department, City Center. And this is what the phone looks like. Um, we have to decide, Wendy, Heidi and I, if we want the twenty-four buttons, but then you can program in twenty-four. So I'll pass that round, it's the third one here.
What was the, did they explain to you what the resource licenses were? There's fifty resource licenses? Remember what those were?
He didn't say anything to us about that.
Your what?
I was just curious, I don't know what that is, I don't know what that is.
And so you'd just be buying the the phones and the system then?
Fifteen resource licenses might be than some of the fifteen numbers that we have right now, because I think with all of our phones and stuff, it's like-
There is a monthly fee then?
Oh, fifteen?
Yeah.
Yes, there is a monthly fee, yes.
Besides the ten thousand?
Yeah, if, the monthly fee would be higher if we leased the phones. But you still, leasing the phones will pay like-
Just for using their system?
Yeah, you'll pay almost three thousand just more in, in interest for leasing the phones.
Do you know what monthly fee is?
Yeah, to lease it or to-
No, just, or in general, for just the system?
Um, yeah, there is a monthly fee.
Do you know what that fee is?
Well, on this page? Yeah.
Oh, okay, that's-
If you take this, so, this is what we're paying now, the thousand twenty-one. Over here is eleven forty-five fifteen. So if you subtract the hundred ninety-six eighty-two, because if we don't lease some, that comes off the top. And then you can subtract, I think it's eighty dollars, because we don't need static IPs on, on those. Plus ours internet would drop from, would go down to that two oh two, which now we're paying two hundred and twenty-two.
So it saves us money on our, then?
Yeah, it goes down. And we're saving a hundred dollars a month for Comcast has opened more.
We actually have those almost exact same ones that work.
And the ones, like I said, the ones we have here, we bought. We got them when Chris Richter was still here, because she's the one who got them and I think she's been gone since two thousand ten or twelve.
She got right before Scott was elected, so thirteen. So twelve, she'd be gone since twelve.
So it's like there, and we, and we had them for a while before she was, before she left. So they're like ten years old, I believe, is what we looked at the other day. They don't even make these phones anymore.
That one doesn't even really work in here, does it?
Yeah, it's supposed to.
Yeah.
Well, I, I answered the question.
I mean, it's going to lie, but it's, it's kind of the same because of where it sits.
And-
With the computer way over, you know, in the other room, it's there, yeah, we have a problem with it, because we don't have the internet service.
Nothing will change, right? Phone number will stay the same?
They'll stay the same, they'll stay the same.
Well, I heard saving money, so, I mean... It's a good idea.
So if anybody makes a motion, the motion would be to accept the communication proposal from Central Telephone and Comcast Business.
So moved.
Second.
Kirby?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.